Good evening. My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I call this meeting on January, sorry, June 9th, 2025, to order at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair, President in the School Board Chamber, our Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callan, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and after the Pledge of Allegiance, the National Anthem will be sung by the Woodstock Elementary School Chorus. Their chorus director is Ms. Nicole Satorius. And you guys can go ahead and walk in prior to our moment of silence. That way... Thank you. Please join me in my moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight Were the red parts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, flappant bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And now, ladies and gentlemen, we will move to the Student, Employee, and Public Awards and Recognition part of our meeting. And Ms. Dwyer?
So this evening, the School Board has the pleasure of recognizing students and staff for their achievements. Our first recognition this evening is for a winner in the Virginia School Board Association 2025 Spring Regional Art Contest. Please welcome student Nova Thompson. Nova is a first grader at Woodstock Elementary School. A contest is held every year at the VSBA. Everything okay? Everything okay? A contest is held every year at the VSBA Regional Spring Networking Forums to showcase art from the region. The first place artwork is shared throughout the year with the membership and spotlighted at the annual convention. Nova is a talented artist from Woodstock Elementary who has been drawing and creating in her free time since she was very little. Her winning piece was inspired by the work of an impressionist painter. Nova let her paint dance around the paper to create this artwork in true impressionist style. Congratulations, Nova. We are so proud of you. I mean, I can read it. Next, we will recognize the winners of the VBCPs Digital Citizenship Contest. Will those please come forward? This contest, titled "Level Up: Thrive in the Digital World," was a dynamic and student-centered initiative led by the Office of Instructional Technology. This division-wide effort was designed to promote responsible digital behavior among students across all grade levels in Virginia Beach City public schools. Students demonstrated their understanding of digital citizenship by creating original works that reflected how individuals can thrive in a technology-driven world. Participants selected from a range of creative formats, including posters, infographics, videos, podcasts, animations, public service announcements, and other digital products. The winners are Ocean Lakes Elementary's second graders Candice George and Lican Ciswerta. Did I say it right?
Yes.
Yes. Tallwood Elementary's fourth graders Shayla Hallman, Jordan Horton, and Naomi Houston. Princess Anne Middle School's eighth graders Edgar Fawcett Curran, McGinnis, and Eli Langenkamp. And Kempsville High School's 11th grader Madeline De Lawrence. Congratulations, students. We are so proud of you.
Our next recognition is for the VBCPs Podcast Contest winners. Please welcome our winners at this time. The honorees of the 2025 Virginia Beach City Public School Podcast Contest demonstrated exceptional creativity, technical proficiency, and storytelling ability through their winning projects, which stood out among numerous divisions entries. The theme this year was Elevate Your Voice to Inspire Education and Entertain. Their podcast served as a dynamic platform for expressing unique perspective, sharing personal stories, and exploring meaningful topics connected to their learning and interests. Through though-provoking discussion, engaging interviews, and published audio design, the student, the team effectively captivated their audience while showcasing evidence and podcasting and community communication skills. The winners in the kindergarten through fifth grade categories are, from Red Mill Elementary, Harper Ferguson. From Ocean Lakes Elementary, Abigail Iskukov. The winners in the sixth grade through eight are, from Lynnhaven Middle School, Haley Waters, Olivia Strauss, and Mary Dan Nedu. From Bayside Sixth Grade Campus, Kayla Hothley. The winners in the secondary contest levels are, from Cox High School, Denise Rousseau, Lucas Gandolfo, Gabby Shakuné, Savannah Heisman, Alicia Savosty-Nate Nova, Haven Thompson, Self-Duville. From Tallwood High School, Raylan Smith. Congratulations, students. We are proud of you. Give them a big hand. Give them a bigger hand.
Our next recognition is for first-place winners in the Future Business Leaders of America competition. FBLA events recognize and reward excellence in a broad range of business and career-related areas, such as business management, public speaking, parliamentary procedures, and social media strategies. The competitions apply concepts learned in business and information technology courses. We recognize the students by their school. So would our winners from the Advanced Technology Center, please take a step forward. Our winners in the Sports and Entertainment Management category are Tanner Mack and Trey Miller. Their scenario focused on a struggling recreation center, recreation center in Florida. Tanner and Trey created a marketing and management plan that would increase participation and usage, targeting Florida's high-retirement community. Congratulations, guys. Our winners in the coding and programming category are William Strong, Miguel Dupre, and Tristan TJ Walker. This team was asked to develop an app that tracks students' finances. Their app allowed students to create categories that represented their spending or income and allowed for the entry of personal transactions. Way to go, guys. Our winners in the Pitch Perfect category are Gavin Lancaster, Jack Tumer, and Tristan TJ Walker. These students developed a community service activity called CyberSafe to bring awareness to middle-school students and their parents on the importance of personal cyber safety. They pitched this activity to three business leaders and fielded questions. After deliberations, this team was awarded $2,500 to get this project underway. Congratulations. Our winners in the Networking Design category are Nathan Figaroa, Nick Moore, and Elijah Owanya. This team was tasked with designing a network infrastructure that safely connected two remote sites together and secured data transmissions. Their final implementation included using encryption algorithms and incorporating security awareness training to employees. Way to go. Congratulations, ATC students. We are really proud of you. Okay, next, we have an FBLA winner from Cox High School. Please welcome Stellan Stafford. Stellan has competed in the state FBLA tournament for four years and has been to the national competition twice. As a freshman, he was fourth in the country in video game design. He recently won the Virginia State Website Design Competition and will be competing in the national competition in California this month. He created a website for the Student Activities Coordinator at Cox. It allows people to book the auditorium, cafeteria, or library for after-school events. Congratulations, Stellan. We are really proud of you, too. Way to go, guys. I didn't even see my third page. Okay. And our last group of FBLA winners is from Landstown High School. This team won first place in the Digital Video Production category. They created and presented a video highlighting Virginia Beach tourism. It will be presented at the FBLA National Leadership Conference this summer. The team is made of the following juniors: Kara Nelson, Trang Buie, and Kai T. Nguyen. Congratulations, team. We are proud of you, too. Congratulations, everyone.
Our next recognition is for the Area 5 Drill Athletic and Academic Championship. Will Green Run's Naval Junior ROTC please come forward? Earlier this year, the Green Run Naval Junior ROTC competed among the top 18 from Virginia and North Carolina. Green Run's cadets earned first place overall for the meet. They also won first place in overall athletics and overall drill, first place in academic sit-ups and push-ups, first place in the Armed Exhibition Drill, second place in the Unit Personnel Inspection, and third place in the Armed Basic Drill. Fourth place in the Navy Nationals Drill Athletic and Academic Championship Competition. The Green Run Cadets are Koyum Ajese Fenty, Leon Blanton, Landon Boyer, Anisia Chambers, Leanne Mae Danden, Xavieron Dennis, Tyson Dunn, Emma Fonsworth, Jabari Falk, Rain Foreman, Jaden Gerber, Giovanni Griffiths, Ayana Hendrick, Gabriel Hordeski, Carl Igus, Raymond Johnson, Catherine Corama, Coramka, sorry, Wassim Labrabet, Margot Loren LaPuz, Robin Larkin, Arnie Pilliden, Landon Pittman, Lila Price, Franklin Resurrection, Tamari Rodney, Jacob Sisnaruz, Keenan Stanton, Helen Tate, Adriana Trevino, Yamar Vergaga, Vergaha, sorry, Deanna Walker, Kristin Washington, Landon Whitman, Xavieron Winfield. Also of note, Cadet Leanne Mae Danden became the first female to place first in sit-ups and push-ups at the Area 5 Championship Invitational. Instructing these cadets are Commander Curtis Brown, Master Chief Courtney Barber. Congratulations, Green Run Cadets. We are proud of you.
Our next recognition is for the Virginia Beach City Public Schools Outstanding Teachers of the Gifted. Please welcome Dr. Kristin Pender and Mrs. Melissa Ross. The recipients of this year's Virginia Gifted VBCPs Outstanding Teacher of the Year Award must exhibit outstanding qualities related to gifted education in the areas of teaching, curriculum development, and adaptation, working with gifted children, parents, and staff. Additionally, they must demonstrate a strong commitment to gifted education through professional experiences, professional organizations, and services in education for the gifted. Dr. Kristin Pender of Holland Elementary School has spent four of her 11 years in education working with gifted students and advocating for education. She exhibits all the outstanding qualities mentioned in her work with gifted students and families. Each school division in Virginia submits nominees to the Virginia Association of the Gifted for the Outstanding Teacher of the Gifted Award. From this pool of exceptional educators, one person is selected as the Outstanding Regional Gifted Teacher of the Year. This year, Ms. Melissa Ross, Gifted Resource Teacher at Salem Elementary School, was chosen as the Region 2 Gifted Teacher of the Year. Ms. Ross has spent 13 of her 17 years as an educator, working with gifted students, and advocating for gifted education. She's a leader in her building and school division. In addition to serving as a mentor for gifted resource teachers, she has presented at local and state conferences and brings innovative ideas and progressive thinking to the gifted programs in Virginia Beach City public schools. Congratulations, Ms. Ross and Dr. Pender. We are proud of you. This concludes the School Board recognitions for this evening.
Right, that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. There is one modification that was emailed out, I believe by Ms. Lanetti, that we would need to vote to appoint somebody for the Regional Recovery School Governing Board. So I ask that we add that to Action 15C. And there is a motion in the back of that packet related to that. Are there any objections to adding that?
I don't have... Ms. Melnick? While I don't have an objection, it would have been nice if we could have discussed this as a board and the motion not already be given to us with the name attached to it. So it would have been nice if we could have just discussed it as a board, but I don't have a problem with adding it to the agenda.
Ms. Rogers?
Yeah, I just saw the motion as well, and I put my name in for that position as well, and I'm not exactly sure why it came without discussion, if there was more than one person.
It could be amended to just appoint a governing board member. That's not a problem. Sorry, Ms., that's easier to do. And I apologize for coming late. We looked at the time period. We realized we could not get it through PRC to amend the bylaw or on for two meetings for you. The governing board for the Region 2 Recovery School will be having its first meeting at 2:00 on the June 24th. Unfortunately, we do need to get it on tonight. I cannot get on two times. I would not be able to vote, wouldn't be able to vote in time for the June 24th meeting, and we do need to have the individual who is serving as a governing board member vote on matters that have to be official at that time. So unfortunately, we had little notice to get it to you. I don't have an objection, obviously, with the amendment coming as just amendment to appoint a governing board member. If you approve that, that's not a problem. We can change it. We've not added it to the agenda yet, so if you just want to change it to a motion to appoint a governing board member, I don't know that that's a problem.
Then I respectfully request that it just read that we need to appoint a member of the School Board to the governing board. It should have never been brought to the board with an announced name. That silences the voices of everybody else on this board, and that's just not necessary.
So I'm just gonna take a comment, and I will take a motion since there's dissent on this matter. But as the Chair of the School Board, the Chair and Vice Chair, create recommendations for committee. That's clearly outlined in our bylaws. This represents that recommendation. So that is why it is brought forward with a name. I am fine, but when this topic comes up, I do recommend Vice Chair Weems for that position. There are motion to add the appointment to the Region 2 Recovery School Harbor Hope Center Governing Boards to the agenda. Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Culpepper. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to add this to the agenda.
So, Madam Chair, was that just to add that to the agenda, or is it to approve the agenda as presented and amended?
We were just voting at that time to add the appointment to the Regional 2 Recovery School Governing Board to the agenda, and now we are to the...
15C, action 15C.
Correct. And now we are to the adoption of the agenda as it has been amended.
So just hold on one second. I need to put that back in again.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so now the vote is for the adoption of the agenda as presented and amended. We're going to do a motion in a second.
It was already... Oh, okay. Yes. Do I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented and amended? Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Culpepper. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to adopt the agenda as presented and amended.
So, Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda as presented and amended.
Thank you. And we are now on to Superintendent's recognitions. Dr. Robertson, do you have any recognitions this evening?
I do. I'm excited to have several recommendations tonight. We'll start off with James Dobbs. We are pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for James Dobbs, currently an Assistant Principal of John Bedai Elementary School, to be the next principal at Luxford Elementary School. And James, I see you have some guests. All right, congratulations. Next up, we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Sarah Mendez, currently an Assistant Principal of College Park Elementary School, to be the next principal at Shelton Park Elementary School. And we see you have some guests. And we see you have some guests.
I have my husband Chris, my son Julian, my daughter Isabella, my mom Tia Mi, my mother-in-law Ben Ban, and my father Martin, and my sister Chucky.
All right. Outstanding a whole row. Next up, we're pleased you've accepted our recommendation for Dr. Leslie Hitner, currently the principal at Plaza Middle School, to be the next principal at Ocean Lakes High School. Now I see you have some guests.
I have my husband Mike, my son Chase, and my daughter Riot, and my sister.
Congratulations. Might be a little conflict of interest, though, Matt, during baseball season. I'm not sure. Next up, we're pleased you accepted our recommendation for Leah Nelson, currently an Assistant Principal at Frank W. Cox High School, to be the next principal at Callum High School. And I see you have some guests.
I have my husband Mike, my son Chase, and my daughter Riot, and my sister.
Congratulations. Thank you. Next up, we're pleased you accepted our recommendation for Tamika Singletary-Johnson, better known as SJ, currently the principal at Larksboro Middle School, to be the next principal at Kimsville High School. I believe SJ, Dr. Singletary-Johnson, is the first principal in Virginia Beach who's been at an elementary level, a middle school level, and now a high school level. And so you have some guests.
I do. I actually have a graduating senior, so I have a lot of family in town, so I'd like to give my niece Adriana, my son Xavier, who's graduating tomorrow, my husband Dontray, my nephew KJ, my sister April, my friend Chrissy, my brother Amos, and my sorority sisters are here from the afterglow.
So Xavier, your mom talked about you a lot when I'd visit schools. I've been following your career. Next up, we're pleased you've accepted our recommendation for Anthony Smith, currently an Assistant Principal at Oscar Smith High School in Chesapeake, to be the next Director of Alternative Education at Renaissance Academy, and Anthony is a graduate of Green Run High And I see you have some guests.
I do. I have my beautiful wife, Catherine Smith, Dr. Jonathan Smith, my son Stephen Smith, my son Anthony Smith, just graduated from surface university. And my father Michael Harris, and my mother Donna Harris, who's also a teacher at the Virginia Public School. My uncle Tyron, my aunt Teresa, and my wonderful legendary uncle Elijah Calak Harris.
Yep. We're not done yet. We are pleased you've accepted our recommendation for Tasha Weirin, currently the Coordinator of Business and Information Technology in the Department of Teaching and Learning, to be the next Director of Advanced Technology Center. And we see you have some guests.
I do. I have my husband Ernest, my daughter Denise, who's graduating in the first year from first family in high school, and my daughter Olivia, and my current student, Dr. Martin.
And then finally, we're pleased you've accepted our recommendation for Allison Zycook, currently a Special Education Program Specialist for Norfolk Public Schools, to be the next Coordinator in Special Education, the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. And we see you have some guests.
I do. I have my husband Tom, I have my son Owen, my daughter Nora, my mother-in-law Ed, and my best friend Gordon.
So to the families of all of the individuals who've been promoted tonight, we say thank you in advance for the time we're gonna take. They've all assumed some pretty serious positions, and they do great work already, which is why they're sitting in front of us, and they're gonna need your support, and I know they're gonna have it, and we're really excited for all those individuals that are here tonight. So enjoy, and July 1, we get started. Thank you.
That was no accident. I mean, it's embroidered right here, too. It wasn't just pink and green. I had a feeling, too, which is why I wore my Alpha Sigma Alpha. Sigma Alpha. That's why I changed it to red tonight.
Okay, we are now to the approval of meeting minutes. Are there any modifications to the May 27, 2025 regular school board meeting minutes as presented? Seeing none, the motion is made by Ms. Dwyer to approve the meeting minutes as presented, seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to approve the May 27, 2025 regular school board meeting minutes as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the May 27 meeting minutes.
Thank you. We are now on to the public comment portion of the agenda. The school board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the school board and the school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the public comment section is for the school board to offer an orderly forum to receive public comments during the school board meeting. I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in discussion and decorum. Whatever views you wish to express, the school board wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and perspectives are heard. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the first speaker?
Thank you. Our first speakers are Cody Connor, Susan Berman, and then Jordan Brokaw.
You know, it's a shame that you choose to time and time again place yourselves on the wrong side of history. Over here on the right side of history this month, we're celebrating Pride Month, where love and acceptance are not conditional, where the truth of freedom is known in a way you couldn't comprehend, where people just to exist as themselves will every day live the words "give me liberty" or "give me death." That sounds like the land of the free and the home of the brave to me, but I wouldn't expect you to understand. Two weeks ago, you voted to eliminate diversity, equity, and inclusion. You publicly declared yourself against diversity, equity, and inclusion. Actions like that are why I keep hearing the word fascism so much lately. In the simplest terms, fascism is a far-right authoritarian hyper-nationalist political ideology that values and prioritizes the ruling class and the state over the people and human rights, putting it in direct conflict with liberal democracy. Sound like any recent political movements you can think of? You know, when people think of fascists, they usually think of somebody wearing a swastika or a white hood, and while those people are dangerous, it's the less obvious, more subtle ones that I'm more concerned with. I see fascists, they walk around just like regular people. Some of them don't even know they're fascists. There's nice, polite, I'm just doing what I think God wants fascists like Mr. Callen. There's people that probably became fascists because they were just too damn arrogant to even question themselves, like Mr. Culpepper. There's I'm just doing what my friends told me to fascists like Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Brown. There's I'm not like those other fascists like Mr. Bowen Steele and the I don't even know what that means fascists like Rose Dwyer. These people, those that are too scared, dumb, smug, to know or do any better, the support and supply train of fascism, if you will, they're what gives the movement strength and momentum. But regardless of that momentum, it's a movement doomed to fail, because you'll always have to go through people like me, because love and kindness uplifts, and so good people will always rise up, where hate and greed is an emptiness that consumes you, and evil will always falter. No matter what great thing you think you're building, there is no solid ground on the wrong side of history. No matter how pure you think your intentions, there is no right way to do the wrong thing. But I want you to know there's still time to do the right thing. There's always plenty of room here on the right side of history. There's still time to make good decisions.
Our next speaker is Susan Berman, then Jordan Brokaw, then Alan Wakefield.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Berman. You may remember that I am the PTA president of one of the largest elementary schools in Virginia Beach, and when I told my husband I was coming to speak tonight, he said, "Again." So sorry to be here again tonight, but this one hits close to home. I'm here to ask the Policy Review Committee to not move forward with the proposed language change to Policy 610 on instruction. The new proposed language would prohibit guest speakers during the school day and explicitly prohibits fundraising during the school day as well. While this may sound harmless enough, this policy change would have significant and widespread consequences across our school and community. PTAs fundraise through fun runs, and these generally happen during one day of PE, meaning for each student, one PE session is spent running, which happens to be a physical activity, so that works nicely. From this, PTAs are able to raise up to tens of thousands of dollars that they then give back to the school in the form of approved supplies and activities, like microscopes for the STEM lab, field trips for the students, carnivals, books for the library, et cetera. Fun runs and other events like holiday markets during lunch are conducted during the school day because that is the only time that we can guarantee student engagement. While this is true for all schools, it is particularly stark for lower resource schools like Title I schools, where parents are often unable to show up outside of the school day. I'd like to remind the board that parents decide how PTA money is spent. We allocate funding based on parent discussion of priorities. Do we want to buy new soccer nets for PE, or do we want to give the school money to start an outdoor classroom? We get staff and administrative engagement, but our budget is created and voted on by parents. If you take away our fundraising ability, you take away parent choice and engagement. For example, our PTA decided that we were going to have a fun run, and we were gonna use that money to pay for field trips for all students. We took it on ourselves, which we were only able to do because we had a very dedicated team with a flexible work schedule, which almost never happens, and we were able to keep all of the funding minus a 3% credit card processing fee. With this funding, we gave every student a free field trip. So that means that the 5th grade went to Pamplin Park, a Civil War history museum, and the 4th graders went to Jamestown. Both of these were aligned with their SOL curriculum, and they made what they were learning in books real. These were expensive because they required charter buses. So if the PTA wasn't able to fundraise, these kids wouldn't be able to take go on this trip. If this rule changes, our fundraising would diminish, and we might not be able to fund these kinds of important field trips and other projects. There are already policies on the books that would support and define fundraising and speakers, so I find this policy change to be unnecessary, and it would be harmful. I think these consequences are unintended, but they still could happen, so please vote against this policy. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jordan Brokaw, Alan Wakefield, and then Diane Muscovac.
So from 2019 to 2023, an average of 2,000 Virginians died each year due to traumatic brain injuries. A traumatic brain injury is a condition caused by a bump, jolt, or blow to the head that disrupts the normal function of the brain. Millions of people get traumatic brain injuries each year, ranging from severe, which have extended periods of unconsciousness and memory loss, to mild, which is most commonly known as a concussion. Even with traumatic brain injuries affecting all ages, the highest number of people who are admitted to emergency rooms for TBIs are 15- to 17-year-olds, or high school students. Many assume that concussions only happen to athletes. However, car accidents, falling off a bike, walking to a wall, falling off a bed, or just an incident in PE class are just some of the ways traumatic brain injuries can happen to everyone. There is a Virginia law that requires school divisions to inform student athletes, their parents, and coaches on the risk of concussions and the risk of continuing to play with them. This law also requires that if a student athlete is suspected of having a concussion, then they will be removed from play until they are cleared by a medical professional. Furthermore, the law talks about the gradual return to academic work for student athletes. There are many problems wrong with this law, but one I want to focus on is the fact that it only addresses student athletes. It says nothing about other students in the system or even teachers. According to the CDC, 1.7 to 3.8 million traumatic brain injuries happen in America each year, and only 10% are sports-related. Only focusing on sports-related injuries excludes 90% of traumatic brain injuries. Traumatic brain injuries, even on the mild side, can have lasting effects that range from it could be a week, or it could be the rest of your life, from memory loss and poor eyesight to drug and alcohol addiction. There are also many mental health effects, including anxiety, depression, PTSD, and increased risk of suicide. The suicide rate for those who have had concussions is three times higher than the general population. Concussions can also lead to a higher risk of developing Alzheimer's and dementia. These concussions go unreported a lot of the time. Teachers don't necessarily know how to recognize if a student has gotten a concussion, and some students either don't report them because they are athletes and they're scared of being taken out of their sports, or because they just don't know what a concussion is and how serious it actually is. The lack of education about concussions to teachers and students is harming today's youth, and I just think that concussion should be taught to students, but also just to teachers need to be talked to about concussions.
Our next speaker is Alan Wakefield, then Diane Muscovac, then Tara Campbell.
Good evening, everyone. Love to see all your smiling faces. Whoosh! Crash! Oh, an alien? No. It's just meteors flying by hitting the Earth. 16 meteors hit the Earth every day on average. Whew! Lyra met Orion, two meteors, on an asteroid millions of miles away. She landed before he did, and they struck up a conversation that lasted for a few revolutions on the asteroid that were going around a planet. Then Granite yanked her off the asteroid. Orion stayed on for a few more years. Talk about a long-distance relationship. Lyra was so much ahead of him, probably in many ways. That's about the truth. You know, I know my wife and I were talking the other night, and we just finished dinner, and I was saying, I said, "You know, honey, I'm getting bags under my eyes," you know? And I said, "I wonder why I'm getting them like this." She looked up at me, gave me the teacher's look, and I just turned, shut up, turned around, and walked back, and then started doing the dishes. Orion asked me if I could chart Lyra's path. I needed an astrophysicist. Just a few minutes ago, my cell phone showed a news flash quietly that remains of a meteor that fell in Northern California about a month ago. Equity was needed because they had different backgrounds. Orion recalled he had a girlfriend from millions of years before. We have little time left, so how about we take this up together again in a few months? Orion says, "Okay, but I can tell he is lonely." Orion asked me to tell two school board special meteor jokes. Hope you all have... Why don't meteors ever get married? Because they're always falling for someone new. Why did Orion break up with his girlfriend? Because they were on different wavelengths. Oh, God, I know I should have left that one back. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Diane Muscovac, then Tara Campbell, then Jessica Bruno.
Reestablishing God in public education for the first time in over 60 years, God is being welcomed back into public schools. With the passing of the Texas Chaplain Act, school chaplains are now playing a key role in restoring spiritual and emotional well-being in education. The National School Chaplains Association reports powerful outcomes from international data, including improved inter-student relationships, student motivation and goal-setting, respect for teachers and authority figures, teacher morale and retention, and overall school safety. It has reported de- It has reported decreased alcohol and drug use among students, teen pregnancies, disciplinary incidents, school violence, and student suicides. The crisis in public education is undeniable. Teacher resignation, classroom violence, student depression, anxiety, and suicide have reached unprecedented levels. Over one million felony assaults have been committed by students against teachers. Forty-four point two percent of students report persistent feelings of hopelessness. Here's what parents and teachers are saying about the impact of school chaplains. This is from a middle school teacher. She says, "The support our chaplain provides has come to our school when we needed it the most. I have someone I can confide in who's made my day less stressful." A high school principal reports, "Having a chaplain on campus has helped our students and teachers navigate challenges with strength and grace. It's one of the best decisions we've made." And this is from a superintendent. "Chaplain Miller has brought a new level of peace and stability to our campus. We fully intend to add more National School Chaplain Association certified chaplains to additional schools." In addition, parents and teachers are saying school chaplains are a light in the lives of our children. Every school in America needs this program. Our school feels like a community again. There's definitely more peace. As a parent, I finally saw hope return when the chaplain stepped in. This program has brought emotional healing to so many of our kids. And not every child, you know, needs help, but we can't leave behind the ones who do. We feel safe knowing a chaplain is available for our children every day. Chaplains are not just a spiritual guide. They are a part of a team. You have your parents, your counselors, your administrators, your principals, your teachers, and your chaplains. All working together to make productive citizens for society. Let's work together to change the heart of people starting at a young age as early as kindergarten. God's children deserve to feel safe in school. Let's make Virginia the next state to pass a chaplain bill. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tara Campbell, then Jessica Bruno, then Kristin Walsh.
Good evening, School Board Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Dr. Robertson, and members of the Virginia Beach School Board. My name is Tara Campbell and I proudly serve as the president for the last four years of the Virginia Beach Council of PTAs. In addition to that responsibility, I'm the president of the PTA at Point of View Elementary School, have served in various capacities at both middle and high school level on their PTA and PTSAs. I'm a proud third-grade teacher, teaching at Point of View Elementary School, one of our Title One schools here in the district. And I'm a parent to seven children, one of whom just graduated from VBCPS, and six more who are or will be enrolled here shortly, ranging from high school down to ECSE. I am speaking tonight to express serious concerns about the proposed changes to School Board Policy six dash ten regarding guest speakers and fundraising activities during the school day. As a PTA leader, teacher, and invested member of this community, I urge you to vote against the proposed language. Specifically, the restrictions on non-academic guest speakers and fundraisers during school hours would drastically cripple how PTAs and PTSAs engage families, foster school spirit, and support our schools. At Point of View, for example, we raise approximately fifteen thousand dollars annually through a single fundraiser that takes place during the school day. That one effort funds every single event that we do, from trunk-or-treat to holiday celebrations, movie nights, the talent show, to the beloved Students versus Teachers basketball game. Importantly, we are able to provide these events at no cost to our families, many of which would not be able to afford to attend an after-school event. The same fundraiser also supports teacher appreciation efforts, classroom needs, campus beautification, and extracurriculars like our chess club, cheer squad, and safety patrol. We even fund a scholarship for a graduating senior who once walked our school's halls. This fundraiser, which takes no more than five minutes per day of school time, teaches valuable social-emotional lessons such as responsibility, respect, and leadership. It does not detract from academic learning, but in fact, it enriches the social-emotional experience in ways academics alone cannot. Beyond the PTA, this proposed rule would create broad unintended consequences. It could impact school picture days, book fairs, supplies from vendors like Office Depot, P-card purchases, class ring, and graduation sales. Many of these activities not only support students directly, but also have a financial kickback to the district. Additionally, the burden placed on administrators to make case-by-case determinations about every speaker or event is neither practical nor fair as they are already overworked. I respectfully urge you to stop this policy change from advancing beyond the Policy Review Committee and to work together with your PTAs for the commitment of our students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jessica Bruno, Kristin Walsh, and then Lauren Celio.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Bueno. I'm the vice president of Princess membership at Princessham Middle School, as well as the recording secretary for the District Council. I'm also a mother of two current Virginia Beach students and one who has graduated the system. I've committed thirteen years of volunteer time to the PTA at both elementary and middle school levels, holding board positions as well as numerous committee positions. Restricting the ability for PTA to fundraise during school hours will directly impact the funding used to provide our teachers the supplies, tools, and grants requested, which is used to supplement instruction materials and aid and support learning needed to pass the required SOL testing. During my time on the Princessham Middle School Executive Board, we've provided support to the music department, purchasing new instruments, which I would like to note added in the Princessham Middle School being awarded the Blue Ribbon Music School for the past two years. With new and more instruments in the classroom, teachers have been able to lead students to excellence. The science department, we've also added the science department with supplying oyster beds, specimens for dissection, and greenhouse supplies. The tech ed department with a prominent racetrack. The student activities department with end-of-years student celebrations. The Avid Department used funds to pay for transportation of students to visit colleges. Even the clinic uses funding raised during school hours to provide change of clothes to students when unexpected events arise. Pam's PTSA provided scholarship money to graduating Virginia Beach seniors totaling fifteen thousand dollars in just my five years as a board member. Portions of this money again is raised during the school year and our school hours. Why would you want to strip our Virginia Beach Public School teachers of funding to support classroom time lesson planning? Why rob our students of supplemental materials and experiences that will help build the foundations that will continue to build for the remainder of their time in our Virginia Beach Public Schools system? I ask you to please vote to not pass the six-ten policy language and consider the impact on instruction that will be negatively impacted by wounding the PTA's ability to fundraise. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kristin Walsh, then Lauren Celio, and then Heather Saip.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Walsh. I'm a native of Virginia Beach and a Talwood High School graduate, a proud parent, and now the PTA president at John Bedai Elementary. I'm here to oppose the changes for policy six-ten. As the president of John Bedai and a voter of District Eight, I strongly urge you to oppose the proposed language prohibiting non-academic guest speakers and fundraising during the school day. The rule would severely limit the ability for the PTAs to engage in parents, to engage parents, foster community, and otherwise support Virginia Beach Public Schools. The money raised by John Bedai PTA each year benefits students, staff, and families, the community and the community. The booster fundraiser only took up five minutes for five days. It did not reduce learning or affect academic outcomes. The Gollum Run was held on the last day of the week during each student's PE period. No academic time was missed. Every student was included whether they raised money or not. At John Bedai, fundraising isn't just about dollars. It's about community enrichment and the support of our students and staff in ways that go beyond what the school budget can provide. Let me share with you some of the things that the JBD PTA has been able to offer because of our fundraising. After-school programs, which provide a safe and structured enrichment beyond the classroom hours, assemblies, trunk-or-treat, holiday pop-up festival, field day, all free to families, and creating shared experiences to build joy and connection for our community. Staff welcome back, breakfast, lunches. We stocked the teachers' lounges and Teacher Appreciation Week. These aren't perks. These are expressions of gratitude that help retain and support our educators. We've provided yearly teacher reimbursements, snacks for students who don't have any, and welcome packages for new military students to ensure every child feels supported and included. We directly contributed to the beautification of our school, installed garden beds that give students hands-on experiences, growing food that goes straight to the cafeteria, and purchased spiritware to build school pride. And then there are big-ticket items. The items that have been cut from renovation budgets are simply not funded by the city. Through the PTA, we've stepped in and provided outdoor PE equipment, benches by the playgrounds, three-D printers, microwaves in the staff lounges, educational health-themed artwork, grade-level signage throughout the school, school spiritware, military appreciation dedication art wall, reading books, solar eclipse glasses, headphones for students that don't have them, and STEM lab equipment. These things matter. They transform the school into a place where students thrive and staff feel appreciated. Every student, regardless of their financial background, gets the full John Bedai experience. Removing fundraising from the PTA just doesn't shift responsibility. It dismantles the structure that makes this possible. Fundraising would be best when it's done by the people who invested in the heart of the school. Please don't take that away from us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren Celio, then Heather Saip, then Whitney Yancey.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Chillo. I'm currently the PTA president of Great Neck Middle School and the John Bedai Segal Circle PTA Chair. This is not to say how much I've done, but I just want to point out that I was awarded the Volunteer of the Year having not been here for a full year. Anyone who knows military families knows they jump right in. I did not move here twelve months ago. I moved here ten months ago with two children in tow with a husband in combat training, filling a pod and driving down. I thank you for the opportunity to speak and I'm here to oppose the language change to policy six-ten. A little background about me. I met my husband at a school many don't know unless you're military. It's called Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. There, we ran cross-country together and he commissioned into the US Navy. We moved here to Hampton Roads where he wanted to give me the opportunity to quote, "try out Navy life" before I felt trapped and committed to becoming a Navy spouse. While my husband and I both got to choose this lifestyle, our children didn't get a choice. One of them attends Great Neck Middle and the other John Bedai Elementary. Mr. Culpepper, if I may borrow a line from you. "The best predictor of a student's success is parental involvement." PTAs are the best opportunity for parent involvement, helping at school events, funding, and how they're used. Everyone has given a long list about that stuff and I assure you Great Neck also has a long list, but I wanted to speak about something else. Fundraisers in school events are vital to students, families, and the school community, especially military families. When my spouse is out of the country, I become a single parent. There's only one of me. Neither of my children can drive. When events take place that build that community during school hours, there is a hundred percent chance that my children can attend. When those events can't take place and have to take place outside of school hours, I can't guarantee they're going to be able to enjoy those events. It also gives my children the opportunity to make friends and more importantly, to feel like they're part of their new school community. Assemblies and other events that don't seem like that big of a deal really make the difference for military children and their ability to move. We always talk about how resilient they are, but in truth, we see the tears, we see the frustration, we see the anxiousness of moving and making new friends and being the new kid over and over. I'm sure you all have heard, "It takes a village," as they say. I'm respectfully asking all of you to be part of the village for not only my children, but all military children in this area. And I thank you very much for the time to speak and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heather Saip, then Whitney Yancey.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the School Board, Dr. Robertson. My name is Heather Saip and I am the president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I'm here this evening to speak on Regulation five dash five two point one Cellular Phones and Personal Electronic Communication Devices Limitation on Use and to urge the board to follow the recommendation from the Policy Review Committee majority to keep Section C, Number Two, which states, "High school students may use personal electronic communication devices during their designated lunch period." Recently, Virginia House Bill one-nine-six-one and Senate Bill seven-three-eight were signed into law. These identical bills, law effective July one, stipulate, quote, "age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate policies relating to student cellphone use and smart device possession and use on school property from bell to bell," end quote. They specifically cite the most restrictive limitations are to be in the classroom and to prevent, quote, "distraction or disruption of the learning environment," end quote. This new law does not state that schools need to be one hundred percent cellphone-free during regular school hours. Restrict does not mean prohibit. If it did, why qualify with age and developmentally appropriate use? The VDOE also does not make law, only give their guidance. This is a variance from Governor Youngkin's Executive Order thirty-three, which is not law, just a strong recommendation. The new law gives divisions more flexibility. Lunch is a free period for students, a chance for them to decompress and rejuvenate. Many do this by listening to music on their device, reading a book on their device, or playing games on their device, oftentimes with friends. It is both age and developmentally appropriate for us to teach high school students that there is a proper time and place for their cellphone use. The classroom, short-time period for class change, and bathroom is not the proper time or place for cellphone use, but their free lunch period is. Please do what is best for our students and allow our high school students the opportunity to learn proper time and place use of their cellphones and other personal electronic devices. I also urge you to read it for yourselves and I will email it to you. Our division also needs to ensure training and processes are in place in uniform across the division regarding handling disciplinary action and to follow this new state law which says, quote, "Implementation and enforcement of the policy is the responsibility of the administration," end quote, and is to, quote, "minimize to the extent possible any conflict with the instructional responsibilities of teachers or any disruption to instructional time and does not involve any school resource officer," end quote. How this is handled cannot be a site-based decision. We need uniformity across the district in every school.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Whitney Yancey.
Hello. I'm gonna try to put this into three minutes, but I don't know how. So just follow me because it's gonna be all over the place as my life has been all over the place dealing with this situation. So I tried to write stuff because I didn't know it was today. That's one of my issues too. We wouldn't have known if God wasn't on my heart. I wouldn't have looked on the site, but I was trying to get my calendar together. So I'm gonna start with, and I hate that we have to start with saying who we are to get respect. The same issue while I'm here almost happened in here today. So I'm gonna ask who's the the security officer's name, because I addressed Ms. Itner, who is the principal for Plaza Middle School. My children go there. So on this first day, I'm a missionary for God, so that's who's leading all of this. And it has been very difficult. I am an advocate. I'm a mother. So I'm picking between being a moderate and a mother today, and I have to be a mother. I'm a Norfolk educator. I do the same thing in another city. I'm a volunteer social service commissioner. So it shows you how much I love my cities and the area I live in. I do this stuff for free when I'm a single mother of children with cystic fibrosis, if you know what that is. So I live at CHKD. So in this movie Straw just came out the other day. They sent it to me, some elders, because I was trying to get together. I have seen so much being a missionary, but Virginia Beach Public School was almost the one thing to break me. So I want to start with first thing. I went to the school on April the twenty-second to tell them about bullies. I left my school and my principal to go let them know there was an incident that was gonna happen with a fight. I get there, I talked to the principals, and I've been working with Dr. Itner and Mr. reject the whole school the whole year. So let me just start with, I also have a very seasoned nonprofit that specializes in etiquette, entrepreneurship, education, resiliency, because that's what these children need to deal with all of this. So I know why this is happening with me. So because of this, I go to the school. I let them know that there was an incident that was about to happen. They did nothing. These children got into a brutal fight and it's sad because I can tell some of you have no clue. They hit it. So she could get that nice little job that she's about to get at Ocean Lakes, but this will not be the end. So on April the twenty-second, it was a big brawl at a middle school. Twelve and thirteen-year-olds, they ended in broken fingers and concussions. I went there before my school starts at seven o'clock in the morning. So I had to get there with the older kids. So I left my class to go to the school because my daughters were getting bullied. I teach my kids not to fight. So since my children don't want to fight and my daughter will tell you straight up, she's not fighting. And now we're here. I was assaulted by a police officer, same SRO at that school in front of my children. He put a car and wants me to forgive him. My attorney said, I think not. If the Senator. And uh, if I didn't have the community engagement that I have, I would be in jail. Now it's everyone wants to fix what they're doing behind the scenes. So no one knows. That's over today. I had to really get myself together to advocate, but this is really bad. So because of Virginia Beach Police Department, I mean.
And that is time.
Yeah, I was assaulted and now.
And that is time.
Apology.
We're gonna go to our online speaker, Kim Mayo. Please unmute.
Good evening. I'd like to discuss. Good evening. I'd like to discuss social emotional learning and ODS admissions now that we have an Office for Opportunity and Advancement. First, big congratulations to my Virginia Wesley and Maryland softball program on another great season, so close to another national championship. Social emotional learning known as SEL, this is a big expense for school divisions. I opted mine out and recommend the book Bad Therapy, Why the Kids Aren't Growing Up by Abigail Shire. She explains SEL handicaps the most vulnerable children. The problem is the mental health experts, not the kids. Ellie Krug, Chair of our Gifted Advisory Council hosts monthly roundtables with national thought leaders and occasional local guests. She recently hosted Nicole Runyon, who linked technology overuse driving the need for SEL. Neither is the answer. This does not diminish the important work. Some counselors do, but I'm unclear why VB schools needs SEL. We don't use Chromebooks at all or spend time in SEL in my elementary tuition program. I've often said we can learn a lot from other cultures and school communities to improve. Secondly, regarding old donation school, many feel it's problematic to have one gifted school monopolizing resources. I've been very vocal about this. I was told gifted education is on the agenda for July, so I wanted to tell you something as someone well-versed on this topic. Let's rethink ODS admissions. All ODS students should be retested as fifth graders to earn their spot for grades six through eight. No student should be handed a golden ticket for a coveted spot for six or seven years. A college athlete who starts as a freshman doesn't just keep their spot as a senior. Let's create opportunities for all, especially current third graders who are impacted by the admissions scandal. If we're gonna have an Office of Opportunity, let's stay true to that mission. Thank you, School Board and staff for all your hard work this year. I really appreciate the opportunity to discuss various education-related topics with you. I hope everyone has a nice summer.
And Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening.
Thank you. That brings us to the information portion of our agenda and we'll start with the Policy Review Committee recommendations. Welcome Kami Lanetti, School Board Attorney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members and Dr. Robertson. I'm Kami Lanetti. School Board Attorney on behalf of the Policy Review Committee. I will be bringing recommendations from the June. I'm sorry, the May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five PRC meeting. There are. Four policies tonight, actually five policies and one regulation we'll be covering. The first one up is Section Two, which is your administration section. This is staff members, consultants outside the school division. The only recommendation happens in section, in paragraph one, sorry, sentence one, which will be staff members may instead of using leave. We may use annual leave. That is the only recommendation that is coming to us from the administration. Or then it questions about Policy two fifty-seven.
Ms. Rogers.
Yes, I just had a quick question. I was, um, I know that the. I know the purpose of this, but if we specify annual leave. Like say someone has got a consultant gig, there's some sort of family emergency, someone goes on FMLA, will that stop them from being able to do? Like that consulting if they're like on FMLA, if we specify just annual? Or can we say that can't you sick leave? Because I know that that was the purpose, but I don't want to make it so that. You can only be on annual leave and if you have like an FMLA situation, we're then precluding you from. Doing a consulting thing.
I may have to turn that one over to Dr. Trotman as to the reason why we made this change. Would you like to take a look at the policy?
As we, as it currently reads, it reads leave, the change that annual leave.
And and I remember during the PRC meeting, they talked about having people not go on sick leave to do that, which I agree with. But I just don't want it to be that somebody's like, if you're in an FMLA situation, that you can't make. Any money because like you're supposed, you know, if you're caring for somebody. And then you already have a consulting gig that that would preclude someone from being able to like do that. That's. There you go.
Um, so if you're on FMLA leave, you can um, contact ER. And ER can put you in another leave status. And then go back to FMLA leave, but we would have to have that rationale.
So that's what I'm saying, like, is just saying annual going to preclude anyone other than annual leave? From doing consulting? Like, I just don't want to.
That's why I didn't read it because I'm not sure it will affect, and I understand what you're saying, but when I read it, I'm not sure it affects the way you're. You're looking at, although I understand where you're trying to go, but I'm not sure the way the policy would.
Right, and I'm just trying to make sure that we're not accidentally doing something that we don't mean to.
It currently reads, "With the approval of Superintendent, comma, staff members may use leave to do private consulting." So I'm assuming that that's their time that they're working with us. On their private consulting work will not be done on school division time. So that's assuming you're leaving a school division. Or with use of school division facilities, equipment, computer systems or materials. The staff members are responsible confirming that consulting work is not in violation of the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act. Um, the way I'm reading the policy and I will have to have HR correct me if I'm wrong. Is that they're concerned about you leaving your assigned work to go do private consulting and that you can't do it. You can't just take lunchtime and go do it.
Right.
Or take a day off and you should be in training for it. It appears that now, am I wrong about that? So the way it's written is for an employee who's in active status. So you're working for us and if you have a consultant job, you're not taking the division's time. You're taking your own time. So you're submitting your own leave.
Okay.
So that's the context that the policy is written in. Um, for active employees and active status, payable status work and you can't be paid for two.
Right.
Different. Yeah, you wouldn't want them, I'm sorry, you wouldn't want them doing sick leaves. Take, let's say you had abundance of sick leave and you wanted sick leave and you would call it. And I think it might have to do with the approval path for it. With sick leave, you don't necessarily have to get prior approval for a couple of days. You can just call that sick. Annual leave you are supposed to get prior approval for. So that way you can't take a job for two days, call and say, I was sick. Uh, this one because that would put us at a disadvantage.
I just want to make sure though, like I said, but from what you're saying. It wouldn't preclude someone on any other type of leave to like do that consulting work.
But we'd, we'd have to look at it case by case because if you're on FMLA leave from the division. We'd have to look at what you are, um, ER, we look at what you're doing because you're on FMLA leave. So sometimes it's that you can't work. So, but you're working for the school. That's from the school division's perspective. This policy is written for the school division's perspective that you are working and you need to take time away from work. To do the consultant work. It wasn't written for if you're not in active status working for us.
Okay.
And I understand where you're coming from, but.
Because like I just think of like scenarios where like someone's spouse gets very ill and they take FMLA. Care for their spouse, but they have this thing on the books and then they can't do that thing, you know. I just want to make sure that we're not doing something like that. But if we are or not, then that's fine. I'm just trying to, you know, make sure that. Yeah.
Come on. Okay, so, uh, Ms. Rogers, when you take FMLA. The doctor is basically saying that you're unable to fulfill the responsibilities of your current role now. FMLA was not designed for you to be on leave and go work another job. It's actually a terminating offense. Um, and so I don't want people to leave with the impression that you can go out on FMLA and then work a second job. So whether you're caring for yourself or you care for a spouse or a family member. They're saying it's to the level and degree that it needs your help. However, the doctor stipulates, it could be, you know, but if it's full-time care and you're out on FMLA. And you're still being paid by the division, you cannot go out and work another job and be making money. And so, um, I'm not, and that's why I'm trying to figure out, why would you use the example of FMLA? Because there's so many laws around FMLA.
It's just another leave example because we're specifying just annual. So I don't like, I don't know if there's another leave that someone could use. I just.
They would have to use their annual or their personal leave because basically they're taking off for their, from their job to work a second job.
Is annual and personal different?
It, yes, it depends on what type of employee you are and how many uh, months a year you work. So yes, but. They're basically the leave that you can use to do other things.
So should we say annual or personal if, if it's, you know what I'm saying? Like I just don't want to. Box people in. That's my.
Dr. Trump, is this something we can clear up in a regulation, do you think? I do because. Twelve-month employees earn or accrue annual leave.
Right.
You're coming from the standard that a teacher earns personal reasons leave. So although it's the, the leave is used in the same capacity per se. It is a different terminology. So if you are questioning the terminology, I do think that that's something that we can. Um, deal with.
Okay, I just, like I said, I just don't want to box this in that it's not annual. It must be annual. If somebody can take personal because they're twelve, ten-month and not twelve, you know. You know what I'm saying?
Why don't I work with the Department to see if you can come up with a regulation to clarify? I think I understand where you're concerned about.
I just don't want to box people in and then they can't take the, the leave. That's all. Because it's very specific that says annual. So if we say annual. Or personal, I just want to make sure we're not boxing our employees into just annual leave.
As long as it's not sick.
Yeah, as long as it's not sick. That, that was my concern.
How about we work on a regulation, see if that helps clarify this?
Perfect. And I'm gonna ask that the Chair of the PRC weigh in as well.
Yeah, I mean, obviously the intention is exactly what Ms. Woodhouse said. So I think if you just clarify that personal is for. Those that work this job and annual is for that. Just, I would suggest clarifying regulation, just the definitions.
So I'm hearing consensus on moving.
Policy five, uh, two fifty-seven forward. With the understanding that the school administration will look at a regulation to clarify the concerns that Ms. Rogers has brought to our attention.
Okay, is there any objections to that? Okay, all right. So seeing none, we'll go ahead and do that. Um, all right, thank you.
Next policy is three sixty-seven. This is in Section Three, which is Business and Non-Instructional Operations. This is environmentally sustainable practices. We kicked this one around back and forth at PRC for a couple of months. We're coming back to the couple of recommendations, um, after looking at this. In Section A, we were changing the wording in the third sentence and it will be social stewardship by encouraging rather than through. So we've got by encouraging the corporation's sustainable practices. Down in Section C, after some discussion, we had to go back and forth on this issue for a while. We are recommending that from the PRC that you take out Section One, renumber after that one. Section One is required that all school division. New construction projects and major modernization and renovation projects be designed and constructed to a minimum lead. Standard certified or equal. After much discussion and looking at city policies, we've decided that perhaps this is not necessary anymore. So we'd be pulling that out. That would then renumber the rest of this section and those are recommendations coming out of the PRC for three sixty-seven.
Mr. Cummings.
When looking at striking out the Section One, um, do we do any cost benefit analysis of? Lead versus non-lead or certified or equal? In terms of, you know, what is the actual impact of this requirement on construction?
I might have to turn this over to Ms. Ingram, but I do believe with each project that is considered into. The design and the individual aspects of it. Not every, every project meets the same lead standard. So it depends on what we're incorporating into that, but then we have Ms. Ingram address this.
Um, yes, and we did look at there is a nominal fee for, um, the contractor. Um, to be able to utilize this framework. Um, to be able to, um, basically, uh, track that they're addressing the framework. Um, so, and then there's also a fee for the A and E firm to go ahead and, um. Go through the paperwork, the application process and making sure that the contractor is abiding by it. Uh, it's fairly nominal in terms of, um, being, um, roughly one to five percent depending on, as Ms. Lanetti said, the cost of the project. So, um, in, in the case of a larger project, of course, it would be less. In the case of a smaller project, it'd be greater. Um, just to clarify, we've talked to the Policy Review Committee. Uh, this just apply, uh, apply to, um, large modernizations or new construction buildings. So like the Di Elementary School renovation or, um, Thurgood Elementary School type of projects. We do not, um, use this policy at all for, or like HVAC replacements or replacement projects. So we're talking about larger construction.
And, um, I actually, because I looked at. Uh, the fact that there was an administrative directive attached to the PRC's packet. So I did reach out to City Council, uh, for clarification on that administrative directive. I am going to skip over the part where they're discussing how old the administrative directive is, but I am going to read this. Um, from the city manager to the vice mayor that I received. Says this administrative directive was adopted well before significant inflationary increases associated with construction material and labor costs. If you recall from our five-year forecast, construction costs have increased around ninety-nine percent from what they were five years ago. Economists and construction estimators do not foresee any significant reductions in construction prices on the horizons. Is why the past several years, city staff has recommended and the city council has adopted CIP focused on reducing, rescoping. In some cases, eliminating CIP projects. I checked with staff and we have not built a lead-certified building since the Parks and Rec Admin Building opened in twenty eighteen. The new city hall was not built or designed to lead requirements. In addition, the new police headquarters, the old city hall building. The old police headquarters building and the newly renovated Aquarium South Building were not designed or built to lead requirements. We're not planning to use lead requirements for redesign and renovation of Great Neck Bayside Princess Anne Rec. Um, and then he goes in to say, don't get me wrong, we incorporate the use of energy-efficient equipment. And lighting when possible to reduce operating costs. But we do not build the lead as in not fiscally in our best interest to do so. There are money studies that show that lead and green building projects cost more with ranges cited as typically around five to ten percent more. Um, as such, unless City Council says otherwise, in accordance with Section four point one, city staff has taken the position due to economic environment. Is not fiscally in the best interest of the city to pursue lead certification requirements on a new building or building renovation products. Projects. As mentioned above, we're in the process of revising our updated administrative directives to clear up any further confusion with respect to this one. I will notify staff that this one is to be considered null and void. Um, I'm happy to share this with any of the members of the board as, as needed, but I did want to, um. Bring that to attention since I had requested, um. That from, or I had asked information from somebody on our other counterpart. Um, as it pertains to lead and whether or not, uh, we need to do lead because the city approves our CIP. Um, package. Uh, but I do have, um, one policy question. And that is as it relates to, um. The curriculum piece. Um, under, it's now the newly numbered Section Two. Um. And I've noticed recently in some of our energy performance and management contracts, uh, that curriculum upgrades is included in those approval packets. Are we utilizing CIP funding, um, when we are upgrading lighting and such to make curriculum? To make curriculum modifications and enhancements?
Um, so for the energy performance contract um, language, the contract does allow um, very nominal fee. I think it was um, um, for, for um, curriculum related. Um, it was a virtual sandbox was the last one that we purchased, um, using the, the, the contract for energy performance contract, yes ma'am.
Do you happen to know what the total cost of that addition was?
I can look into that for you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Mister Cummings.
I was just gonna follow up Chair Brown, just ask that it be sent out to the board, that what you just read.
Will do, thank you. Alright, Ms. Lynetti.
I will note, as, as taken out of section C, the way it currently reads, it's required. Doesn't mean we can't consider and it can't be proposed, it way we read it, you have to do that. Uh, there and the decision was, it still would be incorporated, much of the lead stuff is also currently incorporated into state building code. And other areas on it, so it doesn't prohibit us from doing it, it would just be something we would consider in the decision as to whether approve a project or not. Are there any further questions on three sixty-seven? Hearing no questions, further questions on three sixty-seven, we're going to move on to four dash three, which is grievances and grievance procedures for teachers. On here, we have two grievance policies, one is for teachers, because they have set regulations, and then one is for the employees. There are simply a modification grammatical air, changes in the first section one and two, there's nothing significant other than that. So just a minor correction, it's rather than say decisions regarding whether or not it's, it'll simply read decisions regarding whether a matter is grievable. And those are the only recommendation for amendments to policy four dash zero, are there questions about policy four three? Hearing no questions on four three, I will move on to policy four four, this is in our Personnel Section. This is equal opportunity, non-discrimination, anti-harassment in compliance officers. There are simply uh, recommendation in section B to include a word that was left out, which is the word ethnic. Under section D, which is a required notice about who to contact for compliance officers. We needed to update the address, it was reading the Laskin Road Annex, which we no longer own. And now we'll read the Plaza Annex where we do at, which is now kind of Carriage Hills, we were just updating the contact information for that. Those are the only recommendations for policy four four, are there any questions on policy four four? Hearing no questions on policy four four, we're going to move on to policy four fifteen, which is Personnel Records. These are what I would consider mostly describing our grammatical errors, you'll see a minor change, uh, simplifying the sentence in the second paragraph of parag-. Second paragraph for a sentence, a paragraph A. Simple changes under section C on to what constitutes the content, content of files. Other than that, there is just some corrective language grammatical changes on the, other than that, there are no significant changes. Recommended for policy four fifteen, which is our Personnel Records, are there any questions on policy four fifteen? Hearing no questions on policy four fifteen, we're going to move on to a regulation, again, we normally don't do regulations. However, the school board does have responsibility for regulations that can result in student discipline. Excuse me, so under Regulation five fifty-two point one, remember the superintendent brought this to you earlier in the year after the governor's executive order. At that time, the recommendation was to allow for students. In high school to be allowed to use their cellphones during the lunch period, this was different than what how the. The um, state executive order was reading, the superintendent told you that time, he would be coming back to you at the end of the school year with a recommendation. To remove that, but he didn't feel like it was going to be appropriate at that time period. Ke- Mister Delaney brought back to the Policy Review Committee that exact recommendation at his last meeting to remove. The use of cellphone for high school students at the lunch period, that is how the recommendation came to PRC. Was approved for legal sufficiency at that time period, so it is the school administration's recommendation that you remove. The opportunity for students in high school to use these, their cellphones during their lunch periods. As mentioned during the administrative issues, like it was brought, was asked as, uh, one of the, the PRC members asked, could we continue to consider? Allowing students to use lunch, use their, high schoolers to use their cellphones during the lunch period. It was my understanding, looking at the current policy, that that was going to be allowable. Since that time period, we've had significantly bad discussion, it became an issue at the Virginia School Board Association's Law Conference last week. Well, the week before, actually, we were looking at as to what the intent was, there is some confusion right now as to what, what the word restrict means. When you look at the bill, it's written, it says you have the opportunity to restrict use during the school bell. And this falls under the new policy twenty-two point one, sorry, statu- statute twenty-two point one seventy-nine three colon one. Under subsection B, it reads, each school board shall develop and each public elementary and secondary school. Shall implement age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate policies relating to student cellphone smartphone device possession. And use on school property from bell to bell. The definition of bell to bell, which appears in section eight, reads bell to bell includes lunchtime and time in between classes. So it's a little confusion as to what the word restrict means. Under B one, it reads except as provided subdivision four, which is subdivision having to do with students with IEPs or five oh fours that require use of a cellphone. Said except as provided in subdivision four, restrict cellphone and smart device possession use on school property from bell to bell. So it's a little confusing for us right now, and I don't have really great guidance on it, as the superintendent has instructed the, you, Virginia Department of Education. Then the case, there will be some further guidance coming out. The Virginia School Board Association Legislative Team believes that the, it was intended to be, have some flexibility. But I can certainly read the word restrict to mean that you cannot allow them from bell to bell coming out. So I will tell you, at this time, it is not clear as to what the state intent was, and I was unable to clear it up for the PRC at their last meeting. There was a two-one decision at the PRC to allow this to come forward and remain as it is currently written. Which is to allow for high school students to use their cellphones during lunch periods. Again, that is not the recommendation of the school administration, the school administration believes, starting next year, that all students should be prohibited from using their cellphone devices. Or personal, other communication devices from bell to bell, again, first bell to last bell of the day. So is there a little bit of confusion, yes, there is, we believe there might be some clarifying, um, clarification coming out. I do believe if you were to restrict use completely from bell to bell, that would be completely compliant with the law. I can't a hundred percent tell you whether you allow some use of cellphone use during the bell to bell period, whether that's gonna be a problem for us. That might have some clarification next week or so, but again, the recommendation coming out of the school administration to the PRC was to not allow use of cellphone from bell to bell. Of that, I will leave it in your hands to leave that discussion.
I'm gonna just let maybe Doctor Robertson speak first, since it was the administration's recommendation. To not have cellphone use during the day bell to bell. Can you elaborate why and why now and not then, and can you elaborate that on?
Madam Vice Chair, before he, he speaks. I, I was sick in bed for five weeks, and if I sit up here for another minute in this freezing cold underneath this vent, I'm gonna have to go finish this mini- meeting at, um, at home. It is so cold up here, that's why the chair's out there, it is so cold, we, it, we cannot even breathe back here, so I'm sorry to interrupt, but it is bad.
Good, good point, do we know, did it? Okay, so Doctor Robertson, and then, then we've got Ms. Melnick and Ms. Rogers, thank you.
Yes, um, so our recommendation earlier in the year was to not go full effect January sixth. Uh, with bell to bell at the high school level, because it was such a dramatic change in the middle of the year. We felt like a phased approach would be, would be most appropriate. Where uh, high school students could only use the, their cellphones during lunch. Yeah, my, all of my conversations I've had with the principals in the spring semester, including Mister Delaney. And, and his leadership of schools, and my conversations with students was that. Next year, we were going to be cellphone-free bell to bell. Um, and I still feel that way, my team feels, still, still feels. And it's appropriate to eliminate the use of cellphones, the access to cellphones, bell to bell. Now, we've also created some caveats, for example, if there's an emergency situation occurring. And a student can access their phone and does so, there's, that student's not gonna be disciplined for that, because it's an emergency situation. Uh, but early indications are that students are adapting. To focus their cellphone use during the lunch period. My fear is, we start next school year and allow students to use cellphones during lunch. At the high school level, it will not be long before lunch turns in the hallways, lunch turns in the classrooms. Lunch turns in the restrooms, we're gonna be back where we were a year and a half ago. Uh, we had a speaker earlier tonight, rightfully so, talk about enforcement. We do not want our teachers to have to enforce cellphones. We ask our teachers to write referrals, and then we take care of the discipline. Our discipline data showed in January and February, our number one infraction was cellphones. And the kids eventually learn we were going to be enforcing discipline. We did not suspend anyone out of school for the use of cellphones, um, so that's something that's restricted, and rightly so. So we feel like we're, we, we still believe that uh, a, a bell to bell ban is appropriate. Uh, now, there is going to be some additional guidance coming out, hopefully this week from the Virginia Department of Education. So perhaps because this is a regulation, we might be able to be given a couple of weeks to see what that um. Language is from the Department of Education, then bring it back and have another conversation with the board on June twenty-fourth. Because we don't need a decision right now, the decision doesn't go in effect until we, uh, the time we come back to school. So we do have the luxury of time for the first time in a long time, and uh, perhaps it's best that we use that at this time.
Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, um, Doctor Robertson. You just made a statement about your concerns, um, about the increase in cellphone usage. Has that been the case since we've been with One Lunch, having cellphones? So have you seen an increase from January till now? As opposed to September, or I'm sorry, August to January, or has there been a decrease, or do you not know?
So in, in, if we're, are we talking about just infractions? We're talking, which, which would be, we would track by infractions.
Okay.
So the last data that I reviewed wa- was the Janu- January, February, March data. And that's where the cellphone violations at the high school level jumped up to our number one violation.
But was, but was it more so than the cellphone violations prior to One Lunch implementation?
Yes.
Okay, because.
I would chalk that up to, um, the fact is, I think that uh, there were some. Staff just not enforcing it at all.
Okay, okay, um, and with all due respect, I appreciate your stance, and I know that we've heard it a bunch. Um, but I also think that it is actually the board's decision as to what we want to do. And I also know that uh, the public has commented at nauseam, uh, including the students and the parents. That um, cellphone usage during One Lunch is important for many, many, many reasons. And I also firmly believe in teaching students time and place. I cannot tell you, even from my uh, own personal experience, how difficult it is once a child graduates. To teach them something that they never had an opportunity to learn in high school. Um, even so much that I know of, of adults, young adults graduating college. Never learned time and place and have been fired from their jobs because they couldn't stay off their phone. I think it is crucial in ensuring our students are career-ready to understand. Lunchtime is your time, work time is not your time to do cellphone usage. And so I um, support the two-one decision out of the PRC. And I think it's extremely important that we teach students how to use their cellphones. And high school is the age-appropriate time to do that. Elementary school, middle school, no cellphones, fine with that, but I, it's imperative that high school students, before they go. Into the military, out to college, or into a job, understand when to use their devices, and I'll yield.
Mister Cummings.
Uh, thank you, I think my only request is before we vote on this, that we probably have a more in-depth presentation about some of the things that you discuss. And, cause I think, you know, when I think about hot-button issues in the school board, nothing warrants more comments than talking about cellphones in the school. Um, from folks saying, I should have the right to contact my child whenever I want to, we need to get those phones out of the kids' hands and back in books. Um, and so I think that we need to make sure that the public. I mean, I lean towards the decision of the two-one in the PRC, but I do think. The public need, would, it will benefit the public to see all the information that is being presented um, into. The choices that are being made, so that's what I would just ask of, before we vote.
Ms. Melnick.
And I agree with, with Mister Cummings, I just, I'm, I'm just a little confused, because initially, we were told that. The students were doing great, and that they were really starting to respect just that one, that one period of time, which was lunch. Um, and so I hope that's part of the presentation too, that. Um, you know, we took them from no restrictions with cellphones down to one lunch, and I thought the students really. Reacted to that, and I, and we're doing well with that, and even attending a superintendent roundtable, that's what we heard from those students. That they were really respecting that, and they were grateful for the, for the lunch part. Because they really do use their phones academically too, I know there are, I mean, just like we heard tonight with FBLA. With opportunities through apps, um, to reserve rooms. Um, I know there are tutoring opportunities that you sign up for, um, and you sign, you can sign up day of. Um, and you get that clarification um, through an app, so I'd like to have more conversation, you know. Some of our high schoolers are adults, they are eighteen, and it, you know, I, I. I do agree with um, with Ms. Rogers, that high school is a good time to teach the responsibility. And um, and, and the respect that comes along with that, um, you know. It's very easy for a teacher to say, I don't have my phone out while I'm teaching you, and I worked really hard on this lesson. So make sure your phones are not in my classroom, and um, unless there's an emergency, and then it's fine. I had a teacher friend that said that every year, and she never had a cellphone issue, ever.
Ms. Felton.
Thank you Chair Brown, um, I'm in agreement with, with what my colleague Mr. Cummings has said as well, getting more information. Especially after um, Mister Andrews has said that there are some things that are not clear. About the, the policy of the law that was written by Governor Yonkin. Also, you've especially said too, uh, Superintendent, about uh, we have time, to have more conversation about it as well. But one of my major concern that came out of the PRC meeting was having the teachers. To add something else to their uh, duties. Uh, following the students around on their lunch break, very concerned about that, very concerned. So I think now that you're saying we have more time, yeah, I'm in agreement. To go back, have more conversation, and then we can make a, a more um, logistical. More better uh, plan as to how we're moving foot with our students, thank you.
Alright, um, I have a couple of questions, uh, the first one is. When Governor Yonkin signed, and I believe it was Executive Order thirty-three. Did the VDOE issue any guidance at that time?
Yeah, their guidance was um, to enforce the bell to bell. Um, which pretty much we did, except for lunch at high school.
And in that guidance, bell to bell was defined as including lunch?
Yes.
Okay, so when the VDOE sent out a letter saying. What you shared earlier with the guidance, um, but that it codifies the executive order. Wouldn't that seem to indicate that the guidance represents that the executive order and the law. Are similar or, and the same?
I think the operative word there is seem, I think it does seem that way, um. What I found interesting was, the very last paragraph was that uh, DOE hopes to come out with further um. Guidance and, and direction in this week's newsletter, news um, letter that we'll get by the end of the week. So, yeah, my, we, we are absolutely willing to bring information back to this group, so you have every, all the information you need to make the right decision.
Thank you, um, and I, I do think, um, you know, we've had several board members request a presentation, I. I'll, I'll work with you and um, the Vice Chair to determine if, you know, the workshop is more appropriate or the information portion for that. Um, so that that information is brought forward. Um, I have reviewed twenty-two point one dash seven nine point three colon one. And. And I'm having a little bit of trouble wrapping my, um, I'm having trouble wrapping my arms around the fact that we have flexibility to allow lunch. Um, I had actually started to reach out and I had knocked on some doors in my district because my impression initially of the law was different. And so I was surveying people uh, to determine, I will admit, those were actually relatively even. Um, but what I'm reading is under Section A definition, bell to bell means after the first bell rings at the start of the school day to begin instructional time until the dismissal bell rings at the end of the school day. Bell to bell includes lunch and time in between class periods. And I feel like that definition is really important to the entire remaining pieces of law. And I, I understand that my colleagues may have differing thoughts and opinions on this. And that's, that's not to um, diminish those. But it's my interpretation um, that the law is pretty clear. And then under B, each school board shall develop and each public elementary and secondary school shall implement age appropriate and developmentally appropriate policies relating to cellphone and smart device possession and use on school property from bell to bell, which includes lunch. Such policies, sorry, um, shall, one, um, except as provided in subdivision four, restrict student cellphone and smart device possession and use on school property from bell to bell. So then I went down to subdivision four, as it was previously mentioned. Permit any student pursuant to an individualized education plan, Section five oh four, individualized healthcare plan, or limited English proficiency plan to possess and use a cellphone or smart device on school property, including in the classroom from bell to bell, to monitor or address a health concern or as an accommodation or assistive technology support. Um, so I'm, I'm having a little bit of trouble here and I, I understand the guidance. But when I'm reading the law, my interpretation personally is that it, it clearly outlines what bell to bell is to include the lunchtime um, period, and that's creating some confusion to me. And I would also note that um, the regulation as presented, um, I, I'm not exactly sure how I'm going to vote on it because a yes vote and a no vote are the same. So, um, a yes vote is to keep it the same as it was, a no vote is to keep it the same as it was. I, I do not feel like either follow the law. So, Ms. Rogers?
Um, thank you. I just wanted to follow up really quick that with bell to bell, our calendar is not in alignment with expecting teachers to go bell to bell with instructional time? We don't count hours, we count days. And there are, I, I, I think that this would put educators in a position to have to work to police this on times when they should be planning and or uh, ensuring that, you know, that they have time to do things that they need to do outside of checking on students. So that's where I have real heartache with this, is that during One Lunch, our staff, many of them are planning, are getting things prepared, are doing things that they need to get done, which will then be impeded by this bell to bell. And so I don't exactly know how we would adjust that.
So Ms. Rogers, if I may, cause that's a good point. One of the things that we talked about uh, moving into this year, when we restricted it, in the hallways and things like that, we, we told our teachers, you are not the cellphone police. You know, it would be, uh, I mean, you've got two thousand kids in high school, you're not going to know all the names of the kids. And the kids are walking down the hall and you see somebody have their cellphone out, we don't want you to go after them, that's a, that's a mistake. However, we did equip our security and our administrators who have duties in the hall, when they saw those infractions occurring, to take care of those. So we would not ask our teachers, even if uh, a decision was for lunch next year, we would not ask our teachers to uh, be cellphone police in those periods. We are expecting our students to demonstrate the type of growth that you're talking about um, with the expectations. It would be outside of the instructional class time, where the teacher is responsible to handle those referrals, it's on administrators and, and staff.
Right. And then with One Lunch though, that's the whole school to only be monitored for cell phones by our security than an admin. So again, that's a heavy lift for that. So that's my concern because we have such a unique situation. I mean, I know other districts do it, but in Virginia Beach, we have this One Lunch. Very, very successful in, across the division, is my understanding. I just don't want to put extra stress on our staff. That is not necessary. And also unpopular with the, the community. Okay, I'm done.
Vice Chair Weems?
Um, Ms. Lynetti or Dr. Robertson, do you know if, what other divisions have done? Or is everybody waiting to hopefully get clarification? Or have some divisions gone forward and stated, we're going to do it this way?
When we were at the Council School Attorney's Meeting after the Law Conference on the thirtieth, a lot of school divisions have already eliminated cell phones, bell to bell, so they weren't going to change anything. There were a couple that were still discussing what to do. And so we were all kicking around, what did the board restrict mean? Does it mean prohibit or does it mean limitation on it? So I believe there are some still working out, but many school divisions have already gone ahead and moved it from bell, removed from bell to bell, so they weren't going to do anything different.
Uh, so they had done that in January?
Sometime after January, yes.
All right, thank you.
At this time, there are no further policies or regulations from the Policy Review Committee.
And I have one follow-up question to Ms. Weems' question. Um, I know that when we implemented One Lunch, that that was Model F or Fairfax, correct?
No, excuse me, no, it was actually at, I believe, Depron High School in Richmond was the school we visited initially with One Lunch. And I was a high school principal at the time when we did that. That was, that was probably twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen range.
Okay. Um, do we know what Richmond has done in regards to One Lunch and cellphone usage and bell to bell as defined?
No, we certainly find out.
I think that would be useful information for the community and the board. All right. And with that, we are now on to School Board Committee assignments for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Um, these were in the packets. Um, and uh, there was a couple of smaller modifications, but not a whole lot. Um, based on conversations that board members had uh, mentioned with their thoughts on certain committees that they were on and um, movement that they would like to see personally um, for themselves. Um, and I'm probably butchering that, I'm sorry, it's freezing up here, it is getting a little warmer, but. Um, so these are the recommendations. Vice Chair Weems and I worked on them. And um, Vice Chair Weems, do you have anything to add?
I don't think so.
Okay, any discussion? All right, we will now move on to the updated general fee schedule for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Weems, School Board members and Dr. Robertson. We wanted to bring forward to you this evening a few revisions to the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six general fee schedule you all approved back on May thirteenth. The revisions are at the bottom of page two under Adult Learning Center Community Education Courses. And it's the fee for the PN one and PN two adult student LPN program. And it decreased from two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to two thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars due to a reduction in technology fees and HSA eight, AH, um, I'm just going to say it, American Heart Association offsets costs. I thought I could say the acronym. Um, for the PN three new adult student LPN program, the fee increased from four thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars to four thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars due to an increase in background checks, ATI test, lab packs, HOSA, which is a national uh, CTE, uh, student organization for students preparing for uh, careers in health profession, materials fees and uh, graduation related materials and licensure. And then for the PN three adult student LPN program, the increase, the fee increased from six thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars to seven thousand and eighty-five dollars. And that's also due to an increase in background checks, ADI, ATI test, lab packs, HOSA, material fees and uh, grad related, graduation related activities and licensure. And so that concludes the information portion of this presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, I don't see any. Thank you so much. We are now on to information, item twelve D, Virginia School Board Association Renewal Dues. Um, so this will be up for a vote at our next School Board meeting. And the total uh, cost of this, and I did ask Regina to break it down for us, is thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Of that thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents is for dues and five hundred dollars for legal assistance fees. We reached out to the VSBA, that, that part is optional, although I, I will note that we have had board members reach out and utilize that. So I do recommend that we include that in this. Um, member school boards pay separately for attending conferences, training or other services. And um, on the back of this, in your packet, there is a flyer about the member benefits. Many of our school board members participate in various VSBA um, trainings. And, and so, um, and networking events. And so, so does our clerk, so does our school board attorney, and so does our um, superintendent. Is there any discussion on the VSBA membership? Okay. Yes, Ms. Rogers?
Sorry, just have a quick question. Is there a reason why we wouldn't renew it?
The board voted a few years ago to vote on the renewal because of the budgetary implications each year when this comes up. So that's why this is on the agenda.
Okay, just wondering if there's.
And they sent the invoice.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, there's no more public comment, there's no items on consent. So that brings us to Action A, Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. I call for the June ninth, twenty twenty-five, um, to approve the June ninth, twenty twenty-five Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments as presented. Motion was made by Dr. Green, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to approve the June ninth, twenty twenty-five Personnel and Administration Appointed Appointments as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion did pass for the Personnel Report for June ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Um, we are now on to Citizens Advisory Committee Appointment Recommendations. I call for a motion to approve the Citizens Advisory Committee Appointment Recommendations as presented. Moved by Mr. Callen, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to approve the Citizens Advisory Committee Appointment Recommendations as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion did pass for the Citizens Advisory Committee Appointment Recommendations.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Lynetti, I would like some clarification because we did add uh, to the agenda to appoint somebody to serve on the Region Two Recovery School uh, Governing Board. Um, do I just accept a motion to open the floor for that and then make the recommendation? Or do I ask for a motion on what's in front of us?
I think you might want, excuse me, want to take a motion to nominate someone to serve as a Governing Board member of the Region Two Recovery School, the Harbor Hope Center. And that would be, this is going to need to be a term from starting tomorrow until June thirtieth.
So somebody could just read this motion then, that's in front of us?
That would be one way to do it.
Um, does anyone have a motion relating to the Region Two Recovery School Governing Board? Okay, Ms. Rogers?
I'd like to make a substitute motion to discuss the Regional to Recovery School, School uh, Board recommendation.
You could do it that way, or if you make a nomination, you would also discuss. Uh, you would just have to do a second vote if there's a nomination afterwards.
Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Rogers. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Melnick.
Sorry.
I didn't hit the motion button because she was still being done, so.
Sorry, my bad. Um, a substitute motion to discuss the nomination for the Recovery, Regional Recovery School Board.
And I don't think it's a substitute, I think it's an original motion.
Yes.
Uh, no, I think her motion, if I'm correct, is to have a discussion about nominating a school board member of the Region Two
That's what I.
Recovery School Governing Board.
Sorry, that was my.
A motion to have a discussion about the nomination of a school board member to serve in the Region Two Recovery School Governing Board.
Okay, and while um, our clerk is typing that in, I'm going to open the floor to Ms. Melnick to speak.
And then Kim, you have to second that. Yeah.
So I hate to waste time on principle, but I am going to waste a minute on principle. So I am a firm believer in serving where you can be, where you can best serve. And I really didn't think a whole lot, I happened to talk to, to Mrs. Brown this week and, and she mentioned this to me, but it was coming to my seat and seeing a motion already written um, just because it was understood. And I, Ms. Brown, you made a comment earlier about you and Mrs. Weems appoint committees, but you also ask us, where would you like to serve? And that, that was not done, it wasn't done for the board. And so nobody else had a chance to put their name in. I think Mrs. Weems is the right person to serve. It just, it's just the look, that it was just an automatic, and then you come to your seat and the motion's already written. And so it just, it wasn't a good look for the rest of the board. And that, that was my, that was my point.
Ms. Rogers?
Okay, so I actually did, whoops, I actually did put in my name for the Regional Recovery Board. And the reason I did so is A, because I want to learn more about the school. But B, because Mrs. Weems is currently on internal audit PRC workforce development. And she had to come back off the Mental Health Task Force because it was a lot of work. And I think adding this would actually be putting it, a, a lot of work back on her. I was offering to do it, A, to learn more, but also to be um, of help. So I was hoping, I, I actually asked for other, you know, um, committees. I did not get them and that is fine, but I was hoping to be able to do more for the board. That's why I put. That's why I put my name in the ring. Um, I'm concerned about if Mrs. Weems can, she's in a, she's on a lot. And it's not to be disrespectful. She's chairing the P R C on the internal audit committee on workforce development. Um, and then would be doing this. So I just, I would like to, um, that's why I put my hand in the ring, so.
So I'm, I'm going to um, temporarily get involved uh, right now because I don't have a button here, but um, members of this board, when I tried to go through the two-step process uh, for committee assignments instead of just bringing them forward for a vote, they're sitting up here uh, tonight. Actually had emailed me saying that, that isn't the process that had been followed previously. It is the process that was followed. Um, and it, it actually would be my preferred process tonight to have brought this forward to the board for information, then action. But then I found out that there's a meeting on the twenty-fourth, and that didn't allow for the opportunity, and the M O U requires us to have a board member on that committee. I do appreciate the request, and I understand the request completely. Um, there's no way that I would feel comfortable recommending anyone else than Ms. Weems for this position. She is deeply involved in this. It has deeply affected her and her family. She was the driving force behind this, and, and while I appreciate the concerns, I, I did ask Vice Chair Williams if she felt as though she had the time for this, and I asked her if she wanted to do it. And she said she would make time for it. And I said, okay, and so I, I do appreciate that. You know, that after the email went out from Ms. Lanetti, that you emailed me that, and I, I did respond to your email. But um, I cannot in good faith make a different recommendation. Um, and so that, that will be my recommendation. Vice Chair Williams.
Um, yes, the, the reason why in committees there's always a name, because if we, if, if the chair has three or four people sign up for the right committees, you just don't throw out three or four names, because then that would be very hard to get around who to vote for. And that's why in all committees, the chair and the vice chair, ever since I've been on the board, has a recommended a slate. These are the people on the committee. If a committee is late or early, this is the, the person that we're recommending. And then you can discuss it, and then you vote yea or nay, instead of just opening up and saying, these are the five people that wanted this committee, or these are the three people. So that's why, I mean, we're following, um, ca- um, Chair Brown was following the um, process. Um, I appreciate my colleague being considerate, considerate of my time management, but this will be something that um, I've already talked with, with my administration at work. And I will make all the meetings, and I will be able to do a good job. I've worked with the opioid um, crisis for a decade now. In two thousand nineteen, I brought it forth um, to this school division. I've done approximately fifty presentations in our own middle and high schools about the opioid epidemic. I've gone to Richmond, can't remember how many times to testify in subcommittees regarding the opioid crisis. I've um, done a public service and announcement. I've done op-eds. I've been featured in two documentaries statewide. Numerous interviews to say that I have passion and direct knowledge on this is an understatement. So I hope that my colleagues will vote for me to represent them and to work very, very hard in this area that I know about, and I have a lot of passion, passion for. And I would appreciate your support in this. Thank you.
Ms. Dwyer.
So um, I can't think of a better person on this board to represent the Harbor Hope Center. And just as Ms. Melnick even recognized, Carolyn, that you are the person. You were on this project from the start, and you fought for this project. So you deserve to be our representation there. And it's gonna be part of your legacy, and like Ms. Brown said, this hits close to you, very close. And I'm proud of you, and I do want you to head up our Harbor Hope Center to be that governing board person for the year and possibly through the duration.
Ms. Rogers.
I would agree that uh, Mrs. Weems has a ton of knowledge, information has been involved in this. I would just, since we are talking about, or we had information on our committee assignments, I would just respectfully request then that perhaps I would be added to, on something else to give Mrs. Weems the room to be able to take on that. And so that I would be able to serve on something else as well, whether that's audit or P R C or workforce development. I would appreciate that opportunity.
Ms. Melnick. So. Okay, I am gonna do that. I'm just gonna make a motion, but Mrs. Lanetti, I think we've heard some, we, I heard the word M O U mentioned. I think we need an update. If somebody's read an M O U or has been able to reference an M O U, I've not seen or heard anything about an M O U, so.
I got the final signatures this, this weekend, so.
I'm sorry.
I got the final signatures on the, the governing M O U this weekend, so we do have it.
All right. Um, so I'd like to make a motion that um, Carolyn Weems be appointed to the um, Recovery School um, so that she can attend that meeting on the twenty-fourth of June. Um, I mean, it's a simple motion, Mrs. Tony Otto. I make a motion that Carolyn Weems be appointed to the re- Regional Recovery School Board.
I believe um, that's what Ms. Lanetti believes they will meet as quarterly. Is that correct?
We believe other, it'll be, it'll, the desire to run similar to C sep and to govern a school and a regional council, it's technically not a regional board. So we expect it to be governing. We do recognize, as you're starting off, there may be some extra meetings because we're really creating this, this organization, so we expect it to be quarterly, but it's possible there might be a few more meetings.
Can I get a point of clarification on your motion? Are you um, making this motion for the one meeting?
No.
Or are you making it through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, motion was made by Ms. Melnick, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. And I know there was a lot of folks in line, so if you could put yourself back in line if you wanna um, speak. Mr. Bowen Steele.
Like everybody else, I pretty much just assumed and thought Mrs. Weems would be the perfect person uh, for this, mostly because it's a brand-new school, and we do need somebody that has some experience in this. Although I do appreciate Mrs. Rogers' interest in learning more about this, because it's pretty serious, and we need a lot of people to have information on it, so. My, you know, I'm, I'm all for the motion and voting for Ms. Weems for this year, but, you know, maybe if Ms. Rogers may learn something, you know, collaborate with Ms. Weems, and then next year we can vote again, but that's just kinda, but I do appreciate your interest in being involved in this.
Ms. Felton.
As a point of order, um, it's coming before us, before me, before we sit down the board, so I'll, I'll step back and let him speak first, and I'll come after him.
I, I just had some clarification questions, um, and I think just for public sake, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions, Ms. Lanetti. Um, so board received an email about this on six four, today's six nine. Why weren't we able to add this to the agenda? Why does it require a motion to add when there's?
Because I was assuming we had, I forgot, we were having the Monday meeting, so I was assuming I had till Thursday, and the agenda went out when we realized um, we did not have it included on the agenda that we're gonna have to make a motion and, to do this. It's not, backup, one twenty-eight does not include the, the um, policy, bylaw one twenty-eight, which is where you get a lot of the committees and outside organizations, does not have the Region Two Recovery School added to it. So it doesn't automatically show up on this list that you have. When we realized that we needed to get the governing school up and going, it's taken us a little while, the M O U, to get the other cities to sign off on it, we finally got that moving. Uh, we needed to get a meeting for June twenty-fourth. When looking at that, I realized we're not gonna have time to go to the Policy Review Committee to have bylaw one twenty amended to add the Region Two Recovery School to one of the appointed things, which would have put it here on your chart, on there, because to do that, we would have had to go, Policy Review doesn't meet till June twenty-fifth. So we ran out of time for Policy Review Committee. We didn't even have enough time to pull uh, an emergency special meeting for this. I had missed the time period to get it on the agenda, which would have gone out on Wednesday. I was thinking I had to Thursday, because I forgot that we had the, it was on Monday this week, so I thought I had to Thursday to do it. It, the agenda had gone out when we talked through it, and I realized at that point I was gonna have to ask you to be able to get a person appointed into the spot, so it was a last-minute issue that, where normally I would have made sure we had it on the agenda. There's not a way for us to time it out to get it, the bylaw fixed to add this, as to one of the organizations that you appoint to. So it's just gonna have to be a straight motion to do this.
So I'm just trying to understand, just so I understand correctly, so because I, I see like, school board agendas get modified after they're posted, and you know, C, and our, C items say that like, this was added at X time. So you're saying that our bylaws needed to be changed in order to have this person?
No, it doesn't. It's a new organization for us. It's, it's not listed on, or previous, yeah, I'm sorry, so, um.
To add it to the list is what needed to be.
To automatically have shown up on this list, the way you fill it out, it would have pulled either, it would have pulled from bylaw one twenty-eight. It's not in bylaw one twenty-eight, because it's a new organization. And I didn't realize we were gonna need to get that done. I wasn't thinking through that we need to get it done before the meeting we were gonna have on June twenty-fourth, the governing board. It's important that the governing board have a person can officially vote to fill that spot, because there are things we need to get done. That meeting is two o'clock on June twenty-fourth. That's before your second June meeting. So even if I pulled P R C, it was going to be too hard, and because we don't have P R C scheduled until June twenty-fifth, the day after our meeting, you can't go through P R C to get it added on here, which meant I was gonna have to ask the school board to make a special motion to get this person appointed, which is one way, one way to do this. And then when I realized we had missed the agenda, because it went out on Wednesday instead of Thursday, contacted the chair, and that's why I sent the email to you, said I had missed this. I'm gonna have to ask you to add it to the agenda.
And I guess it's like, for the, my own sake of clarification, for what I'm trying to understand, you know, we don't vote on anyone else's name by name, as we go through, we vote as in a whole, like what, and I, I feel like you touched on it, I just wanna make sure I understand correctly. I mean, we could have, what's this, if we, if the motion was just to add that this, the chair and vice chair would appoint somebody, would that not so, not also have been sufficient? Why does a, a person have to be named?
Because generally your process under one twenty-eight, the re, way it reads is that the chair and the vice chair will make a recommendation to the board, and the board will vote on it. That was amendment made about four or five years ago. It used to read that the chair and the vice chair would appoint individuals. We changed bylaw one twenty-eight that the chair and the vice chair will now make a recommendation, the school board will vote on it. So had we said, if, the motion was just for the chair and the vice chair to make a recommendation, if that didn't get done the same meeting, I would still miss the time period to get this person, because I can't wait to the second June meeting, because it's the meeting of the governing board is two o'clock, it's before the June twenty-fourth meeting.
Cool. So my only request is that I feel like this could have been emailed and distributed to the board ahead of time. Just 'cause, I mean, I'm trying to understand things as a new board member.
It wa, I did email to.
Well, not the, the motion, it wasn't emailed to us, if I recall correctly, unless I missed it.
No, no, I drafted the motion today.
Yeah.
Because I wasn't sure if it was something we could get out, um, run it, run it by, to make sure if it was okay. No one came back and said they were gonna object to. And so then, trying to follow along with bylaw one twenty-eight, we had the chair and the vice chair make a recommendation, so it would be consistent.
I think that would have been helpful to have that information ahead of time. Um, I mean, I, I don't assume any ill play, as I think Ms. Weems is the correct person for this position, and I'll, you know, support her in doing it. I just think there is some lack of clarity and, you know, why is there a person name on this thing? Why is there a motion? When I'm voting for all these, not individually, I, I think there's just a little bit of sense.
My request was to have someone appointed in time. I left it to the board to decide how that recommendation would come through. That clarity came to me today, so I drafted that motion today. And as a matter of fact, I was out on Friday, so that's why I didn't draft you on Friday.
All right, well, I'll yield my time. I do think, you know, if we printed eleven copies, we could have emailed this to the board ahead of time.
And I just wanted to clarify that I believe I talked to Ms. Lanetti and asked her if she had written something related to her email around two P M.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's, felt like I did this way in advance here. Um, so, Ms. Felton.
Think it's Chair Brown. Um, I respect uh, the motion that Ms. Melnick has made concerning Ms. Weems, and of course, like she stated, you know, you work best at what you know. Um, it would use that uh, she has been deeply affected, deeply involved, and deeply concerned about this particular situation. If facts, if facts are being known and truth be told, we all have had, us, most of us have had addictions that have been close to us and have weighed us down as well. But my, my concern here, um, attorney Lanetti, is that uh, coming back, I've never been fully informed about information about the Recovery School. And now you're saying about the uh, M O U requires um, a school board member to serve. Out of all my history being here, I know that when we need a person to, to serve on V S B A, there was nominees, and we talked, and we planned it around there, even with the chair for this school board nominees are put forth. So that's why I can understand. I was surprised too to see a nomination on uh, my desk and in my packet concerning um, a board member being um, addressed or served on the Recovery School. Really surprised about it, because it wasn't named, named. The nominee has spoken. She spoke well to the job that she want. And uh, she's put out there who she is, what she's done, all her works. That's normally the process that I remember with this certain board that we need a board member to serve on. But uh, as Ms. Melnick has put forth, and I respectfully say it as well, I respect the motion, and I think Ms. Uh, Weems should be the one that, that serves on this. But in the future, I think we should be more um, sensitive to the fact of there are policies, there are things that we've done, and people just have just, we're used to those things being done in that way. But uh, respectfully, um, I accept the nomination of Ms. Weems for this Recovery School. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, I'm going to call for the vote. Ms. Melnick, will you please um, repeat your motion before we vote? I'm sorry, Ms. Melnick.
Well, yeah, I think so, but I don't like the wording of that, but it says motion to make Carolyn Weems to appointed to. To, to make Carolyn Weems be appointed to, so just motion to appoint Carolyn Weems to the Regional Two Recovery School Board. Through Ja- June thirtieth, twenty twenty-sixth. Motion to appoint.
All right, and whenever she's ready for us, we will um, vote on that. Voting to approve Carolyn Weems to serve on the Region Two Recovery School Governing Board for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-sixth.
So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. That motion did pass.
Thank you, and we are now on to committee, organization or board reports. Does anybody have anything to report? Why's it, got our voting board up. Mr. Bowen Steele.
Um, I just wanted to say that I did complete my goal this year of getting all the schools, but I do want to, I do want to acknowledge the fact that it would have never been possible if I didn't receive so much help, a lot from.
uh, a lot from Dr. Robinson, school board members who have been on school visits, kinda showing me what to do. 'Cause I'll be honest with you, the first time I walked into kindergarten, our first grade class this year, I was nervous and them little guys had me scared. But, uh, watching others talk to the children and say, go talk to them, go talk to them. And all the encouragement and support I got, I do appreciate it because without all that, there'd have been no way I could've done that. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Callen?
Yes, uh, I have been appointed to be the representative for the school board in the Inter-Agency Adult Basic Education Advisory Committee. And this was my second meeting recently. And I just leave there, as I did recently, uh, for a GED ceremony and then the, uh, English Language Acquisition Ceremony as well. Uh, the adult education program that exists here is so impressive in its scope, its magnitude, uh, the network of organizations that are a part of it, that come, speak, offer their resources and their information. You walk away with the realization that this is a gem. And so very few people, myself included, know very much about it. And, uh, it's just an example of, again, one of the things that we do really well. And I just wanted to put a spotlight on it because of how impressed I was. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melnick?
I just wanna say congratulations to all of our students who are graduating this week. Um, I look forward to attending the ones that I can. Um, um, it's such an exciting time. Um, walking in with those students is really, it's really remarkable. And the energy and the excitement, you just, you just can't, you can't capture it all. And just to be a part of that, um, is such a gift. But I also wanna commend my colleague, uh, Mr. Bowen Steele for, really honestly, and I'm glad you said it yourself, but to visit all eighty-six schools in one year is, is quite a feat. I did it myself and that first year, and it, you, you were amazing. And I will tell you, you are my favorite person to visit schools with. You, he, he really is remarkable. And you are now in the most amazing position to make decisions for this school division. Because you have been to every school, you have met every principal, you have been in classrooms in every single school, and you know that each school has its own feel. It has its own personality. And, um, each school, like every human, is different. And, um, and now you know. And that's a very, very special place to be, to understand all eighty-six of our schools. So congratulations again.
Ms. Rogers?
So Mrs. Melnick, still a little bit of my thunder to congratulate all of our seniors who are graduating. But, um, I also want to thank all of our educators who have spent the entire school year, um, working with our students, um, all of our custodial staff, all of our nursing staff, all of our cafeteria staff, every single one of our staff members that have been working every single day with our students. We just have one more week left to go and I do appreciate all of your hard work and your dedication to us and our sta- our students and our community. Um, these schools would not run without our staff. And so I just want them to know how much I appreciate all of their hard work. And I know they are happy it's almost done and time for summer. But again, also congratulations to our graduating seniors and to our students who are almost for summer break.
Mr. Bowen Steele?
Uh, then there is one other thing. I've just been talking to some tech people and I keep getting this name mentioned to me. I'm sure some of you have heard of his name, it's Charlie Hinch. I'm sure you're aware of this name. But anyway, I keep hearing this name, how something, there's a promotion or something, I don't know, but he seems to be the person that is the favorite from a lot of people. So I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Alright, uh, I wanna, I wanna thank my colleagues. I know that we continuously do work on this board and that we will be back, uh, the end of June. This is our last meeting prior to graduations. I wanna congratulate all of the, um, and I know other people have mentioned this, but I wanna congratulate all of our students and that are graduating. And I wanna, um, congratulate all of our students that are moving to the next grade and have shown progress throughout this year and all of our staff, thank you so much. Um, I do have kids in our school system and I am grateful for the excellent staff that we have and the uplifting experience and the educational opportunities, um, that my students have and the students in Virginia Beach have. And so thank you so much, uh, for all of that and congratulations to everyone. And we look forward to seeing our students back next academic year when this one's over. And Vice Chair Weems, we still have closed, so if you would please motion into closed session.
I move that the school board recess into closed session in accordance with exceptions to open meetings law set forth in Code of Virginia two dot two dash three seven eleven, Part A, Paragraphs one, two, seven, eight, as amended to deliberate the following matters. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Any teacher shall be permitted to present, to be present during a closed meeting in which there's a discussion or consideration of a disciplinary matter that involves the teacher and some student, and the student involved in the matter is present, providing that the teacher makes a written request to be present to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Nothing in this subdivision, however, shall be construed to authorize a closed meeting by a local governing body or an elected school board to discuss compensation matters that affect the membership of such body or board collectively. Two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the school's record concerning any student of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any stu- school state system. However, any such student, legal counsel, and if the student is a minor, the student's parents or legal guardians shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting. If such student, parents, or guardians so request in writing, and such requests are submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purpose of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or in which the body, public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on the matter. Number eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss, A, school board internal auditory evaluation, B, decision on student discrimination appeal, C, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, D, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
Motion made by Vice Chair Weems, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to go into closed session. And my board isn't coming up.
Ms. Brown, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have eight ayes. The motion did pass to go into closed session.
Thank you.
Whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section two dot two dash three seven twelve of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it or resolved, that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the mo- the closed meeting was convened or were discussed or considered.
Okay, do I have a motion on the certification of closed session? I think we might have to do a show of hands. Is there a motion moved by Mr. Bowen Steele, seconded by Ms. Dwyer? Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to certify closed session. Raise your hand if you are in favor.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have eight ayes. The motion did pass for certification of closed session.
Okay, thank you. I make the following motion. Whereas on twelve sixteen twenty-four, the parent of a Princess Anne student filed a religious discrimination complaint regarding student discipline matters in November and December twenty-twenty-four. And whereas on one twenty-seven twenty-five, the school administration issued an investigation report regarding the parent's complaint that concluded that the allegations of discrimination by the school were unfounded. However, the report found procedural inconsistencies and made recommendations for corrective actions regarding the discipline actions for the complainant's children, grading and evaluation procedures for students to express discomfort with certain assignments, and professional development for school staff. Whereas on four seven twenty twenty-five, a hearing officer conducted an appeal hearing regarding the investigation report and the complainant's objection to the investigation report. And whereas on five fourteen twenty-five, the hearing officer issued findings of facts and conclusions and recommendations. And whereas on six nine twenty twenty-five, the school board deliberated on the five fourteen twenty twenty-five hearing officer's finding of fact and conclusions and recommendations, the transcript and exhibits from the four seven twenty twenty-five hearing. Now there, it is, now therefore, it is determined, one, that the five fourteen hearing officer's report of finding facts and conclusions and recommendations is upheld. Two, that the school administration is ordered to notify the parents of this decision and to place a copy of this decision and the supporting documentation and any recording of the hearing in the student's official files. So there are second. Second by Vice Chair Weems. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to approve the motion related to the student discrimination appeal. If you're in favor, please raise your hands.
So Madam Chair, we have eight ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. It is eight fifty-one PM and this meeting is adjourned.